Good evening. Today is Thursday, April the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is six thirty P. M. I will now call the regular meeting of ISD one ninety-one, Board of Education, to order. Welcome to everybody here in the audience today, as well as those watching online. Director Miller, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director, oh.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to the information portion of our meeting. First, we will be being presented with an update on FY twenty-three budget. We have Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent and Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education.
Thank you Chair Chester and Directors of the Board. Per Board request tonight, I am resharing information regarding our fiscal year twenty-three budget proposal, and it is the same information. The first few slides are the same information from the March twenty-fourth Board meeting. In addition, Jason Sellers and I will share the latest additional funding we have received from Minnesota Department of Education. Both of these funding sources are from unused funding throughout the state of Minnesota, and now the state has redistributed the money based on districts' requests. And so, we'll move into the overview. I just shared, I'll share recap for scenario two, which was the Board direction given for the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, general fund revenues and expenditures, the state funding update, and then next steps. So you will see here we have scenario two. No changes since the March twenty-fourth. We do have that total beginning fund balance, twenty-nine million, three hundred and seventy-one and eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars with revenues, and then you'll see the variance based on we applied, that you did not want to go lower than fourteen point one one percent of fund balance, and that we're using to have a structurally balanced budget. We are using rightsizing, preliminary adjustments, and the use of federal funds. Those would be the S or three. More information, again, shared with the same links to the initial budget draft reductions, adjustments with the percentages, and just an explanation again of what the budget units are. Rightsizing, three million, you'll see the amount of that. And then the pre-K twelve pathways, we are prioritizing our investments into our pre-K twelve pathways. The initial budget reductions with the percentages, and then the next piece, no changes since those additions, except what is coming up next. And so, wanted to give a little bit more background before Jason gives you the details, and then we'll go over some next steps. So the state expanded summer grant initially depended upon our Mars reporting of the number of minutes students were served during the summer months of two thousand twenty-one. And based on these minutes, the revenues were calculated, and ISD one ninety-one, we received four hundred and seventy-five thousand and forty-eight dollars. Since we received this initial distribution of funds from MDE, they required a new application, as I said, not everyone spent throughout the state of Minnesota their original allocation. And so, they did require a new application for districts for use in summer two thousand twenty-two programming. We are very fortunate here to have a really extensive and robust summer programming, and not every district has that, and so that's why they could not expend their funds. We will continue to provide our stellar summer programming, and we're fortunate to have some additional money so we can add to it. And so, we have received the amount of one million five hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three and forty cents. And so I'm going to turn it over to Jason to give you a little bit more details.
Good evening. As Dr. Battle explained, FIN one sixty-three was the application that the team made. Upon submitting the application, we requested one point nine million dollars. We were approved for one point, one point five four five, as you can see here. And so, I would like to stress that at the same time that we're receiving this funding, we're still able to generate funding from students who attend the program. So it's kind of a really great situation for us to be in. One of the reasons we received so much funding is because we have such an expansive summer offering, kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. The previous summer's application only asked us to submit for essentially K through fifth grade, a little bit of middle school. This time, the state of Minnesota and MDE indicated that you should submit for everything K through twelve, which includes the eighth grade STEM program, that I know some of you have had children come through, and the credit recovery program at the high school. And so, all of that calculated together in this new application is the primary reason. And they base that on essentially the size, the amount of time that students spend in programming. So the team is meeting to figure out the best ways to be able to spend these additional dollars to support students, to support staff, to provide additional supports in the classroom, at the sites, and we're monitoring that right now.
And I will add, one of our biggest challenges is staffing. So do you want to say a little bit about that and make a plug for people?
Yeah, and in the COVID area, staffing can be a challenge. I will tell you that Allison Jordan, who has taken over primary responsibilities for Area Learning Center Program that I used to do a lot of, she reported today that we're about seventy, seventy-five percent of the way on staffing for summer already, which is really positive. It can be a challenge. We are looking to add additional supports. One of the things that Allison has worked very hard on is being able to respond to a lot of our families who are saying to us, Monday through Thursday is great, but can you also include Friday? But to find staff, to have somebody work five days a week instead of have the three-day weekend is a challenge. We think we're going to be able to do that. So we think we're going to be able to add five days of programming, so that the Monday through Thursday will be the classroom sort of instructional, and then the Fridays will be the field trips that we used to take during the Monday through Thursday. So we essentially get five additional days of instructional programming with students, which in partnering with Director Oftedal and others, Amy Pietrowski, interim Director of Special Ed, is really important because we want to get as much instructional time with students.
Next slide. And so, initially received about a hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars for our two thousand twenty-one programming for preschool. And we have also received some additional money, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for summer two thousand twenty-two programming. It's for children ages four to five years of age, and we have to use it by this August. So it's a very quick turnaround. J.C., want to provide some additional information?
Sure. Last summer, there was an application for funds that was submitted by then Director Cindy Check. The funds were very prescriptive in the type of pre-K programming that could be offered in the summer. Some of those prescriptions indicated things such as students who, prioritizing students who hadn't had a school experience yet, prioritizing students who speak English as a second language, prioritizing students who have learning differences and need extra supports. We, the team, both Coordinator Cynthia Samperz and Supervisor Dr. Carolyn Cherry, and I put together an application. They submitted it. These funds are very similar to the funds that we received last summer in terms of total amount. The parameters this summer are a little bit looser, but we are still intent on providing that same type of programming because we know that students and families really benefited from that for school experience. So we will not only have our typical jumpstart programming that happens at a little bit later in the summer for three and six weeks, but we will also have this. It will be housed at Vista View. We are trying to, in increased capacity, so we served, you know, around sixty-five students, seventy students last summer. We're trying to expand it to one hundred students, five classrooms. We would like, instead of one teacher and a program assistant, to have three adults in each classroom. So maybe two teachers and a program assistant, maybe E.L. teachers, because we know the types of challenges that students had last summer. So the students who are served are going to be four or five years old by September first. We have to use the funds this summer, and we have a little bit more flexibility in design, and we're trying to use that funding along with some, this funding along with some other funding, provide even more additional supports. Because we learned from last summer, even though it was good, we feel like we can make it even better this summer for students that will enter into that experience.
And with that, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Any discussion questions? Director?
Just a quick thank you, Dr. Battle and Director Sellers. Really exciting to hear the news about summer programming, and I'm really looking forward to seeing where we land with that. I know we were impressed with what we were able to do last year, last summer, and to hear that you're already thinking about what else can we do. That's, you know, music to my ears. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
I think we got a little more headway this time for planning.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so.
And thank you for the work that has been put into the scenario two budget and the exciting news of extra money to be spent in summer of two thousand twenty-two. So we look forward to hearing an update this fall about how summer went. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Middle School Change of End Times, presenting Dr. Teresa Battle Superintendent, Dr. Angie Poole, Nicolet Middle School Principal, and Mohammed Saleem, Eagle Ridge Middle School Principal.
Thank you Chair Chester and Directors of the Board. Tonight for your review and discussion, I will present a recommendation to adjust the schedule of our two middle schools, Eagle Ridge Middle School and Nicolet Middle School. Joining me tonight are Principals Mohammed Saleem and Angie Poole. Click the next slide. Thank you. So we'll bring forth our recommendation, we'll share a little bit of the history, and then the Principals will share the implications for the recommended change, and then I'll end with next steps. So the recommendation is to adjust the schedule, altering the end of the school day to two thirty. Current time is two fifty P. M., and so that will be a decrease of twenty minutes. We will still maintain the middle school philosophy and the teams, the grade level meetings, our school within a school, funding for reading, math, and social emotional learning support. It does align to the new middle school four block schedule that replaced the eight-period day when this initial start and end times were approved by the Board, and that was in the fall of two thousand sixteen. That's when the Board took action, January twenty-eighth, to approve the two thousand sixteen, seventeen start and end times for schools. And it was, the reason given was to accommodate increased learning through the eight-period day. And so we no longer have the eight-period day. And at that time, the Board changed, approved the recommendations for seven forty-seven A. M. as the start, and then two forty-seven P. M. as the end time. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Principals, who will share some of the implications.
Thank you. Good evening, Chester, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, and Board members. Thank you for having both of us here this evening. I want to start by talking about the implications for students and families. One implication is allowing more time for staff to meet with students and families. And right now, we have very little time before and after school. So this allows time for our staff to connect with families, make phone calls, and reach out to families, and provide support for students by providing homework help or meeting with students after school. Additionally, allowing students that participate in high school sports, allowing them to participate more fully. Right now, they get to practice about half an hour into practice by the time activity buses get them to the high school. So this really allows them to get thereby the start of practice and compete fully. And it also prevents the students from leaving early to compete in games and other competition. In terms of implications for staff, there are a number of them. One is allowing for more time for due process and IEP meetings for special educations, but also allowing teachers to join in these meetings. Right now, there are constraints with the schedule, and sometimes it's challenging to meet families' needs because of constraints with the schedule. So this allows more teachers to join meetings. And then it also, it with Teacher Instruction Minister for Middle School, that would match what we have at elementary at the time, and it would align better with the high school. And I think the biggest piece for us is allowing for increased time for professional development, full staff meetings, and collaboration time for staff. And examples of these activities would include school-wide professional development and community building, vertical alignment for content across grade levels, and an opportunity for our core teachers and elective teachers to connect, and that's hard to do right now. And we also know that professional development really, you know, the highest performing schools tend to have additional professional development and literature and research support that. And of course, with that comes the improved outcomes for students and improved instruction for our students as well. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Ball.
Thank you. So there are some implications for staffing as well. One implication is that our educational assistants' work hours will go from seven point five hours to seven point two five hours. So that's fifteen minutes less in their workday, and that impacts twenty-six middle school, Level Four, educational assistants. And that does result in a cost savings, though, as well, and that's a twenty-five thousand dollars a year cost savings. Another implication is that we'll have one less lunch at each middle school because of the schedule change, and that would be one less lunch supervisor, which is equivalent to about thirteen thousand dollars a year. So overall, these staffing implications do provide some cost savings of about thirty-eight thousand dollars. When we take a look at our two schedules, our current schedule versus the proposed schedule, and there's a few things to note there. So the start time would remain the same, seven fifty A. M. Our end time would move from two fifty to two thirty. Our instructional minutes would decrease by about twenty minutes. Our advisory time would actually increase by two minutes, giving us a little bit more time for that social emotional learning and that connection and community building, a little bit. Our core classes and our elective classes decrease in minutes slightly. But with that change, our SWAS minutes or our school within a school minutes, and that's for that intervention and for that social emotional learning, those minutes are very close, they're reduced only slightly, and that does not impact our school within a school funding at all. The after-school minutes for professional development and family communication, as Mr. Saleem shared, is a really big component of this proposal, and that increases to forty minutes a day. So right now, by the time we get our staff together after school, after buses have departed, we have fifteen, maybe twenty minutes if we're lucky, to try to have a full staff meeting and have that professional development. With the schedule change, it would be a full forty minutes to be able to connect, which is much more meaningful time to be able to have those connections. And with the proposed change, the teacher duty day remains the same, seven twenty to three twenty at both schools.
A couple of additional comments. As the Board may be aware, is there a state statute for required number of instructional minutes? And so for sixth grade, the state statute requires nine hundred and thirty-five minutes, and for seventh and eighth grade, one thousand and twenty, so we will still be in compliance with one thousand and forty-eight minutes. Also, getting some feedback during the budget process, because as you recall, this was one of the preliminary adjustments listed through the budget. And through the budget meetings, we did hear from parents. They really wanted us to return the middle school sports because they felt that after-school activities were most important for their students. And then, I don't know if you've had some chance to talk to students, and if you wanted to share a little bit about your parents. So.
Sure.
The three budget meetings, two, one was Somali parent meeting, one was Spanish-speaking meeting, and then we had another public meeting. It was all about the after-school. We need activities for adolescents in that time.
Yeah, we did some informal checking with families and with students. We didn't want to get ahead of the Board on this, so we wanted to make sure. We just checked in with some folks, though, that would be impacted. Overall, from families, we heard positive comments only. The families that we spoke to had students involved in after-school activities, and some that were actually, I talked with a mom yesterday that was picking up her daughter at two thirty, so that her daughter was leaving school twenty minutes early to go play softball at the high school, and her mom was really sad that her daughter wasn't getting the same opportunities as the high school players. And so, she would be happy with the change in time to be able to have her daughter participate more fully in practice and not miss school time. And I don't know if you had a chance to talk with?
Yeah, very similar, very few so far, and we're happy to definitely engage families even more in that process. But, you know, students we've talked to are excited about this and really would like to do that. Particularly students that are, want to participate in after-school activities, even just getting home earlier from BYC, half an hour later or whatever, makes a huge difference for students and families. And for students that go to the high school, this is a huge change for them, so they can participate fully. So overwhelmingly, middle schoolers are excited about having less school.
So we are going to ask as next step, the Board, to take action. And so during that time, we will have a more formal feedback way for families, now that we've presented the information to you. And with that, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Do we have any comments, discussion, questions from the Board? Director?
Give others a chance first. So a couple of questions that came to mind as I was listening to you. I'm assuming that this doesn't impact transportation costs or time at all?
No, I'm backed on transportation.
Okay, awesome. I figured it wasn't mentioned because it wasn't an issue. The professional development that you're talking about, that would happen onsite? It wouldn't be something where people would have to go elsewhere?
That's right, yep.
Yeah, and the great thing is, you know, we have our professional development days built into the calendar, which are really important. They're that long period of time to be able to really engage people in the training piece, but the ongoing coaching, the ongoing follow-up, the collaboration to be able to discuss how are things going in our classrooms, that's what we need that ongoing, regular time for.
Awesome, thank you. And then lunchtime, will this affect the breaks between lunches? And, you know, I'm aware that, like, for some students, they get to class, then they go to lunch, and then they come back. Is that still going to be a part of that schedule?
Yes, yep. We will still have some, a split block for some students.
Awesome. And then?
I should share that the way that we can arrange that for classes is with our win time, which is our what I need time. So we can structure it as such that students will have their core instruction, have lunch, and then have their what I need time. So it's a natural break in the block to be able to have that lunch.
That makes sense, thank you. And then, one detail question. I was interested to understand why advisory is gaining two minutes as opposed to core. I would think if we're reducing learning time for students, we would really want to, you know, keep as much of the core content as possible, given what we know about where our students are.
And you can build on this, Dr. Ball, too, but I would say I think the twenty minutes advisory and is, and the really focus in advisory is social emotional learning, and that's a huge need in our middle schools right now. So the twenty minutes tend to go really quickly, and just adding the additional two minutes does build in a little bit more, fits in a little bit more with our second step curriculum, and teachers are able to get a little bit more discussion out of that time. So it goes a long way in strengthening our advisory time as well.
So then advisory would be more productive than if this were to be approved?
Absolutely.
Teachers would be more engaged with their students during advisory?
Absolutely.
I agree. Our students and our teachers really like our morning announcements at the beginning of the day.
Yeah, it gives us a chance to do that.
And the opportunity for the pledge. But that, those things do take away from our second step curriculum and our social emotional learning. So even that two minutes allows for the announcements, and anything that might need to be quickly added into advisory and allows us to reserve the rest of the time for that second step curriculum.
Awesome. And then, if this proposal were approved, what would you two expect to see in terms of you knowing that we've been successful with this change?
Well, I would say, you know, given the research on the additional professional development, I would expect increased, you know, quality instruction, but definitely that will show up in terms of student achievement as well.
And I think teacher satisfaction and staff satisfaction with that opportunity for professional growth and that continued learning and that opportunity to collaborate. And I think families will be happy with that opportunity to be able to meet with teachers after school and for students to be able to get that extra support. So I think just that anecdotal satisfaction with the change as well.
And I guess my request along with this would be, you know, rather than having it be anecdotal, really, let's, let's track whether it's on a six-month basis or an annual basis. I'd really like to understand, because there's so much that we're doing right now to try to, you know, increase student learning, to increase staff satisfaction. That, Dr. Battle, you know, like off the top of my head, I can see, you know, enrollment being part of this. I could see attendance and referrals being part of this, you know, whatever the metrics are that you and your team determine that would help us track this particular change in terms of increased student achievement, that would certainly be something that I would, I would appreciate. And, and just a comment, you know, having listened since January to, you know, how time, you know, time is so important, right, for staff and for students. And we know that students and staff have been through a lot this last, you know, this last couple of years, that as much as, you know, I believe all of us are proponents for student learning, given the fact that we're losing twenty minutes, and yet you've come up with, you know, a shift that will help our staff connect and get their needs met, as well as continuing to increasing family engagement, which might be another, you know, metric that could be tracked. This kind of time is something that's, that would, that could potentially be on our side if it's used effectively. And so I just challenge you and your team to bring that data back to us to show that, that we are making the most of those twenty minutes each day.
Any other comments, questions? No, thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Zoe Olsen, our student representative.
Thank you Chair Chester. Good evening, members of the Board. It has been a busy month at Burnsville High School. On Wednesday, March twenty-third, Culture Day took place at Burnsville High School, which was an event that was planned and put on by the twelfth grade Avid class. So all twelfth grade Avid students have to complete a service learning project as a part of their class. And so, students in the twelfth grade Avid class kind of work together and brainstorm some ideas that they could do for that project, and they decided that they wanted to host a culture day at Burnsville High School. So they worked with the school administration. Um, so they worked with the school administration to figure out some of the details and get it approved. Um, they worked on promoting the drive and kind of like informing all the students about it. Um, they made posters and just worked on all the different aspects needed to plan the day. And then during Culture Day, all students were able to dress up, um, to like reflect their culture if they chose to. Um, cultural music was played in between classes, so during passing time. And then there was also a gallery walk. So this gallery walk included some posters that the twelfth-grade Avid students made with information about their own cultures. And then, um, students from, all students in the school really had the opportunity to go see those posters, um, with their classes. And so that was a really cool way for people to learn about, um, different cultures. And, uh, many students did really enjoy this and participate. Um, I know I saw quite a few students were dressed up, which was really interesting and really great way for everyone to kind of celebrate and share their cultures and then learn about their peers' cultures. And then, um, another cool event that some students participated in was from March twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, about ten Burnsville High School students participated in the Minnesota YMCA Model United Nations Conference in downtown Minneapolis. Um, and at this conference, there was over four hundred students from around Minnesota and western Wisconsin that came together to discuss global issues that, um, a whole bunch of different global issues were discussed, such as cryptocurrency, global border disputes, um, distributing healthcare equitably around the world, and the ethical production and consumption of goods. And in addition to learning about and discussing some of these issues, um, many BHS students that participated in the conference also had leadership roles within the conference. So two Burnsville High School students were elected officials, which means that they were, um, just a few students that were selected last year by their peers to kind of help plan and lead this conference. And then about five other Burnsville High School students were appointed officials, which kind of work under the elected officials to, um, help deleg, the other delegates more directly and to just make sure that the conference could even take place. And so, um, I was actually at the conference, and I thought that it was really cool to see all the dedication that our Burnsville High School students put into the conference and, um, all the, everything that they were able to get out as these real-world, uh, issues were discussed. Um, and then students all got a nice break the week of March twenty-eighth, as they had no school for spring break. And then the final of, final quarter of the school year began on April fourth, when students returned from spring break. So, um, it's kind of hard to believe, but there's only about eight weeks left of school. And since then, students have continued to stay very busy. Um, spring sports especially have kept many students busy as they've been starting with games, matches, and meets. Um, at the same time, many juniors are getting ready to take the A C T in about a week. And, uh, many other students have been taking some M C A tests, and seniors are solidifying some of their plans for next year. And then with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Zoe. Um, I really enjoyed, uh, the social media, um, presentation of, of, uh, Culture Day. I thought that was really exciting to see and, and then also hear from you tonight, too. So, thank you. Um, next, we have our superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Chester and members of the board. For my report tonight, I want to reflect on the wonderful one-ninety-one Community of Excellence Award ceremony that we held this week at the Maraz Center at Burnsville High School. After one year of virtual awards in twenty-twenty and a one-year break in twenty-twenty-one, it was a pleasure to gather with staff, families, and community members to celebrate and honor ten individuals and one department with this year's awards. This year's awards winners have such an amazing array of talents and strengths and roles in our community. They represent all the aspects of how we are living our values and achieving our vision of ensuring each student is future-ready and community-strong. Although I believe that all of our staff members deserve an award for their contributions over the past two years, these staff members stood out, and I was so proud to be able to celebrate them on Thursday, excuse me, Tuesday night. If you weren't able to attend, we'll have the ceremony up on our district YouTube page in the next day or two, and I encourage you to watch it. In the meantime, you can learn more about our award winners through short video profiles that are already up on YouTube. We won't go through all of them here, but I do want to show one because this award winner's joy and passion came through so clearly. This is Julio Neptuno Temozan, Educational Assistant at Nicolet Middle School.
About my job, I love everything, the way I can help my students. I need to support them in everywhere. During the period of the pandemic, I was working through the computer. And every day when, when we start the class, before they say something, they say, "Mr. Julio, hi, Mr. Julio," like they wanted to, to see me. They gave me a smile. That, that was the significant a lot to me. Put in, in your job, everything you can bring and give it to the students. They need that. I think I enjoy every single moment in this school. Every single moment, I enjoy that, even though when it's difficult or a little bit difficult, if you want to say, but I enjoy that one. Thank you to my team. Yeah, with, without my team, I cannot do my job.
So thank you, Julio, and thank you to all of this year's Community of Excellence Award winners. And this ends my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Um, are there, next we have, uh, board member reports. Director Alt?
Just a brief one. Um, last night, I had the joy of, of attending the Annie Performance, um, at the Maraz Center. This was the joint, um, Nicolet Middle School and Eagle Ridge Middle School production. And oh my goodness, they must have had at least thirty kids involved on the stage, and I don't know how many they had helping out behind the scenes. But the students were clearly having fun with it. They were really enjoying themselves. Great production, um, and dancing and laughing, and it just, it was, it was great. And the turnout in the audience was, was fantastic. Typically, Wednesday is not very well attended, so it was nice to see everybody there as well. Um, and then, uh, one report on, uh, Winter Drumline. I had the opportunity to witness the closure of this year's Winter Drumline season uh, with another great performance at finals in Rochester. Uh, the performance unfortunately was prefaced by a technical glitch which tested the resilience of both instructors and students. Staff persisted, students remained calm as they waited for the sign to begin the performance, and the team earned the highest score ever in team history. Anyone who had the opportunity to see this year's performance know that it was thought, knows that it was thought-provoking, technically challenging, and skillfully executed by all involved, uh, both students and staff. And, uh, I'm looking forward to what next, next year's, uh, Winter Drumline brings. This ends my report.
Any other reports? Seeing none. Um, we will move now to the business portion of our meeting. Um, and although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on consent agenda items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to new business. Uh, first, on our agenda, we have approved the Swing for the Fences Memorandum of Understanding, um, being presented by Director, uh, Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Chester and Directors of the Board. Um, in a board workshop on March twenty-fourth, board members received information, uh, concerning a proposal to upgrade our baseball and softball facilities at Burnsville High School. Um, at that March twenty-fourth workshop, um, we shared details of the Swing for the Fences project. Um, I was joined by members of, uh, administration and teacher-coaches. Um, and were recommending, uh, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, um, with, um, uh, the Cal Ripken Foundation. And this M O U is the first step and is a non-binding agreement, which allows for fundraising for the project to begin by our baseball, uh, and softball boosters in collaboration with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. So my recommendation before the board tonight is to approve the Swing for Fences Memorandum of Understanding and authorize, um, me, the superintendent, and Executive Director of Business Services to execute the Memorandum of Under, Understanding.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have approved premiums and rates for employee benefits. Um, we have, uh, Stacy Silvi, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Tonight, I'm bringing to you a recommendation for our rates, for our premiums, for our different coverage areas. Um, I'm not going to read through each of the different ones, but I will give you the percentage of increase. For our health insurance plan, we're looking at a six-and-a-half percent increase for next year. Our dental self-insured plan, we're looking at a half a percent increase. For our group life insurance, we're actually going to experience a little bit of a decline, a decrease in the premium, about point zero-zero-six cents per thousand dollars, so. Um, and then as far as our long-term disability insurance, that'll remain flat. With that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves, one moment. Just so that you're aware also, the premiums that are listed here are the base premiums. Each of our negotiated agreements, then will offset that portion. So for instance, a unit may have within their language that we contribute seventy percent towards family. So the district is responsible for seventy percent of a family premium. The other thirty percent would be the responsibility of the employee.
Yep.
Okay? So, um, this just reflects the total. So it's my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the F Y twenty-three premiums and rates for employee benefits.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will have Stacy Silvi, Executive Director of Human Resources, uh, present on adopting a resolution relating to the termination of teaching contracts for named long-term substitute teachers effective at the close of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
This is a vital, uh, portion of our teaching staff each year that we rely heavily on and appreciate. Our long-term subs who come in, fill in positions for anywhere from thirty days up to possibly an entire year. Some of the names you'll see listed here are listed twice. That means they filled in twice within the year, different, uh, long-term sub-responsibilities. We do provide them with individual contracts when they come on board with, uh, projected start dates and end dates. But based on some of the leaves, those dates may fudge a little bit, and we always take action at the end of the year just to clean it up with the formal releases. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of School District One-Ninety-One, that the teaching contracts of the following long-term substitute teachers be terminated at the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice is sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will have, um, be presented with adopting a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of that portion of teaching contracts in excess of one-point-oh and/or beyond contractual rights at the conclusion of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Stacy Silvi, Director of Human Resources.
Uh, again, this is another spring kind of house keep, uh, keeping process. What this release, uh, recommendation for release would be for folks who may have traveling, uh, F T Es that are added because of lost prep time, uh, lunchroom supervision because of lost lunch, overloads by taking on an additional class, or possibly if they were a partial F T E to begin with and we needed an additional class, we may have bumped them up for the year, but we're bringing them back to their original level. That's what this recommendation is for. Um, therefore, it is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District One-Ninety-One, that the portion of teaching contracts to staff in excess of one-point-oh and/or contractual rights be terminated at the close of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice is sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller. Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Staying with Stacy Silvi, um, we're being presented with, um, and that to adopt a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of teaching contracts of probationary certified personnel at the close of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Um, bringing before you a list of thirty-two individuals that are probationary teachers. Uh, probationary teachers are those teachers who have not completed three continuous years of instruction at a, within one district before they achieve continuing contract rights. So within that three years, that's considered a probationary period. The reason that we are bringing to you thirty-two individuals tonight is, uh, one, partly due to rightsizing, whether that is because of class size, maintaining our, our class sizes, uh, for elementary and secondary, also rightsizing based upon our categorical funding. Also, we have to release tier-one and tier-two licensed staff whose licenses are expiring at the end of the year. So before we can renew them, we would need to post for those positions for up to sixty days after their initial time of getting that, those tiers, okay? Doesn't mean that those teachers might not come back, but we do have to post, and we have to look for licensed qualified staff first before Pelsby will approve granting another exception in those areas, okay? Other areas that are, other folks that may be within this group are those who are being released based upon performance. And finally, um, especially at the secondary level, registration needs. You know, we may not have as many students that are registering for a certain content area or specialist area. Therefore, we may have reductions in those areas, and then those teachers are impacted. So, with that, be it resolved by the school, uh, by the Board of Education of Independent School District One-Ninety-One pursuant to Minnesota Statute one-twenty-two A dot four-oh, that the teaching contracts of the following licensed probationary teachers in Independent School District One-Ninety-One be terminated at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice is sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Any discussion? Seeing, yes, Director Alt.
Just a comment on, on this agenda item and the, and the next agenda item, that we do have to recognize that, um, we are letting go some of our people. And looking at the list of, you know, people, um, there are good ones among them. And I have to hope, you know, that some of them will be coming back to us. Um, it's never easy, um, letting go of people because we know that, you know, they've invested time with us. We've invested time with them. Um, most of them have made some sort of positive impact on our students and. Most of them have made some sort of positive impact on our students, and uh this is, you know, it's necessary, and it's probably one of the least favorite parts of this role. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have um being presented with adopting a resolution proposing to place continuing contract teachers on unrequested leave of absence effective at the conclusion of the 2021-2022 school year. This will be a roll call vote.
An unrequested leave of absence is a very specific term in state statute. This goes back to our conversation earlier when I was talking about those who are probationary because they haven't completed their first three years at a a school district. A ULA, an unrequested leave of absence, is one who has achieved um continuing contract rights, has, who has already moved through that probationary period, and we have to take very specific steps with them as far as release. It isn't a one-step process. Often, it's a two-step process. One is the initial proposed discharge for a ULA. The teacher then will have rights to appeal that. If they don't choose to uh exercise those rights, then it will stand and and notification will be sent out that they have been released at the end of the year. If they do appeal it, a hearing officer then will go through the process of determining, is this the right individual? Was the contract followed? And and will make a determination at that point. And then after that, we would come back and take action based upon the hearing officer. Um I will be reading the full resolution on this. This is a little bit lengthy, um but I will start. Actually, I think this is something in which uh it looks like it's written for a member of the school board. So somebody says, well, I can do it. I'll I'll do this. Member, uh member introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, so that'll be the initial piece. Resolution, one, proposing to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence, and two, placing teachers who have not requested a hearing on unrequested leave of absence. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 191 as follows, that it is proposed that the following teachers be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits effective at the end of the 21-22 school year pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A dot four oh subdivision 10 and Article 13 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the School District and the Burnsville Education Association. Miss Janelle Anderson for a release of a 1.0. That written notice to be sent to said teachers regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without fringe, without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law in substantially the following form. Dear Ms. Anderson, you are hereby notified that at the April 14, 2022, meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 191, consideration was given to your placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits. As a teacher of Independent School District 191, and a resolution was adopted by a majority vote to the School Board proposing your placement on unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of the 21-22 school year pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A dot four oh subdivision 10 and Article 13 of the Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement between the School District and the Burnsville Education Association on the following grounds: discontinued position, lack of pupils, and financial limitations. You are entitled to a hearing, provided that you make a request in writing within 14 days after receipt of this notice. If you request a hearing, it will be held before a hearing officer on May 18, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. at the School District offices located at 200 West Burnsville Parkway, Burnsville, Minnesota. If no hearing is requested within such period, it shall be deemed acquiescence by you to the School Board's proposed action, and your placement on unrequested leave of absence shall be effective at the end of the 21-22 school year. Sincerely, School Board of Independent School District, signed by the clerk. That each, number four, that each of all of the foregoing grounds of said notice are within the grounds for unrequested leave of absence as set forth in Minnesota Statutes 122A dot four oh subdivision 10 and are hereby adopted as fully as thir- as though separately set forth and result herein. Five, in the event any or all of the teachers identified herein do not make a request in writing for a hearing within 14 days of receipt of notice of proposed unrequested leave of absence, it is hereby resolved that those teachers, teacher, teachers be hereby and are placed on unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of the 21-22 school year. Be it further resolved, that the teacher identified herein be personally served a notice of placement on unrequested leave of absence no later than June 30, 2022. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member and upon voting be taken thereon, follow in vote in favor thereof, and the following vote against the same, and finally, whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller. Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. We have a roll call.
Alt?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will be approving on a first-reading basis changes to Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Stacy Silvi.
The Minnesota legislator uh did some reorganization this last go-around with their their statutes, and they're moving the maltreatment of minors from Chapter 626 to Public Health Chapter, which is Chapter 260E. Although the the policy looks like there's a lot of changes that's going on, the reality is that the content is pretty much the same. They're moving paragraphs from one area to another and doing some wordsmithing within it to make it flow a little bit better. From a, from a procedural process and from a reporting process, nothing really is changing. It's just flowing different with the new state statute language. There is an annual review of this policy that is required, and this policy did go before the Policy Review Committee on March 22, 2022. It is my recommendation uh that the Board approve on a first-reading basis changes to Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse.
Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Second by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last on our agenda, we have approve on a first-reading basis new policy 530, 535, uh service animals in schools and changes to Policy 799, animals in schools. Brian Gerson, Super, uh Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, and uh good evening, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Uh I'm here somewhat filling in for our interim Director of Student Support Services uh as these were policies that she brought to the Policy Committee, but I certainly feel comfortable bringing forward the the recommended changes. Um starting with the second of the two policies listed, Policy 799 is what's currently in place, and this is clearly an attempt to split two, into two policies. One, 799, that has currently covered all animals in schools and separating out the ones that are really related to uh students with disabilities or service animals, and moving that into a 500-series policy. So what you'll see from 799 is removing language about the service animals and moving into its own policy, uh 535, which largely follows MSBA model policy for service animals as that comes into uh school. Uh the one thing I would say, when you look at the new 530, 5, 535, uh the strike language that doesn't follow MSBA model, policy is taking out uh references to the mini horse. But I will say that in current policy, we also do not have language about a miniature horse. And so it does continue to parallel what we are currently doing and is in current practice. So again, those are the really the substantive pieces to those two, two policies. And so it is the recommendation to approve on a first-reading basis new policy 535, service animals in schools, and changes to Policy 799, animals in schools.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we are at the end of our agenda, so this concludes um our regular board meeting. We are adjourned.